...and speak clearly into them, let me appoint Nelson as a voting member to sit in for Mike's position. Let me appoint Jeff to sit in as a voting member for Desiree's position. I can also announce for the benefit of the board that we have, the town council has approved a new member, a new full member of the board, gentleman named Vincent Russo, who couldn't be here tonight, hoping to introduce him to you, but he's not here. But look forward to meeting him in the future. He is a longtime member of the Hudson Planning Board and had been their chairman for five or six years, and so comes well versed in how planning boards operate, and seems like a really nice guy. So I look forward to you guys getting a chance to meet him. With that, the next item on our agenda is the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Jillian, do you have anything for us?
My only announcement was Vincent Russo's appointment, so that's all I've got.
Do that whole time?
Oh, the light's on.
The light is now on. There's an unexpected library meeting, and he's having to try me in two places at once.
Oh, okay.
Some of us know it's not easy.
All right, well, thank you for checking on that, so. Sorry for stealing the thunder, I guess that's kind of the role I step on in each one of these. Are there any questions by members of the board for the staff?
No, please don't.
Thank you.
If I may, I can attest to Mr. Russo's knowledge and qualifications, because I sat on the interview board.
That's true.
And it will be interesting to have somebody with the breadth of his knowledge and experience in another community sitting here.
I agree with that. I think, as I've traveled around and appeared before the planning boards, every planning board's got its own little, a bit of a personality and a little character for how they approach things and do things, so I think it's great to get that cross-training, cross-experience. With that, item number three on our agenda is Anheuser-Busch LLC as the applicant and owner, and its review for consideration of a two-year extension of the conditional final approval that we granted on April 21st, 2015, to permit a site plan to construct three building additions totaling 55,100 square feet and associated site improvements at the existing brewery. The light, the site is located at 221 DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation Districts, and the 100-year and 500-year flood hazard areas, tax map 3D, lot 31. Jillian, you want to tell us a little bit about this? I know that we asked the applicant, that they didn't need to necessarily present anything, but...
They're requesting a two-year extension in order to fulfill their precedent conditions, as their expansion is now not scheduled to move forward until 2016 or 2017. I believe they're work, reworking some of the design as well.
Okay, thank you. And in a conference with the staff earlier, the applicant was asking whether they needed to be here, and I took the liberty to advise them that they didn't need to be here for this, so if you have any questions for them and they're not here to answer it, please blame, direct that blame at me and not them. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant a two-year extension to this project to enable them to do the necessary work they want to do, and I think more, it's more a question of talking to their parent company without any further to do with this thing. We give them the two-year extension.
Second.
Motion is second to grant the two-year extension. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero to grant the two-year extension. Jillian, I also want to just comment that I think the applicant deserves a little bit of praise for actually asking for the extension before the old one expired, which is not always the case, so actually doing it ahead of time. Make sure you pass that along to them. Item four on our agenda is Matty Schweri as the applicant and owner, and review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for waiver of full site plan review for a restaurant located at 480 DW Highway in the C-1 Limited Commercial, Elderly and Town Center Overlay, and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 5D, three, lot 46, and the agenda item is continued from the June 2nd, July 7th, August 4th, and August 18th Planning Board meetings. Jillian, where are we with the project?
The applicant has addressed most of the requests from the last time he was before the board, and he's seeking final approval tonight. The memo that you received in your packet stated that architectural elevations had not been submitted, but I did want to let you know, you should have in front of you elevations that were brought to the office this afternoon, and we suggested that he present them at the meeting tonight to you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schweri, want to come forward? Take a minute to sign in, and then when you're ready, tell us where we're at with the project.
For the last meeting, we were here, you request some change in on the plan?
Yes.
And I'm going to read what I wrote down. In close, please find the reverse site plan, including the floor plan and complete exterior elevation. Please note setback variance will need to be granted from the ZBA on both DW Highway and Church Street. We are requesting condition approval from the planning board pending ZBA approval. We are requesting a sidewalk waiver using the criteria specify circumstances relative to the site plan on condition of the land in such a site plan. Indicate that the waiver will be properly care out the spirit and intent of the regulation, an easement for the town to build a future sidewalk. The property will be deal it with this application, and extended paved area will remain alongside the road as indicated on the plan. The following is respond to the commandment. Staff comment on the 10th of August on the condition, one to three, agree. Applicant has indicate all existing and proposed easement draft language will be submitted as required by the applicant. And more, and not, five and not eight, for in response to Conservation Commissioner recommendation, six to eight, agree. And you get one and two added, and five as a note. Sign will be submitted separately and will comply with the town requirement. Number nine, note appointment is to remain parking counter adjustment accordingly. A ten, confirm new roof and enclosed require as setback variance from ZBA. For the planning board, comment for a meeting minute on August 18. Label bump out at the upper level. Add physical barrier to define the entrance of the parking lot. Removable bollard with a chain string between the bollard. The removal bollard easy to snow removal process and prevent damage to the barrier. Number three, indicate the extent of landscaping and removal of pavement along DW Highway. And number four, label all entrance and exit on the site plan. Number five, add emergency exit and route to street. Number six, note ZBA setback variance location. Provide all four exterior elevation. Label extent of pavement along DW Highway. Add sidewalk is, added a sidewalk easement. Indicate the location of the existing rock along DW Highway. The railroad tire were removed previously. All item not specifically addressed will be indicated in the final approval plan. Please let us know if you have any question or concern regarding the above. Respond. We do look forward to working with you, closer with you, and your team in the successfully complying of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweri, for going through that stuff. I have a couple of thoughts and questions for you. On, when you were reading number five on the first page, conditions of approval of number five A, and it says that you added the note for the Conservation Commission? The note that you have, number eight, says no salt or deicing compounds to be used on site, except as required in extreme icing events?
Yes.
I need you to change that a little bit for me.
Go ahead.
No salt or deicing compounds to be used on site, period. End of sentence. No more.
I know.
Cross out all the rest of that. Except as required in extreme icing events, cross that out.
What, what number? It's five?
Number, note number eight.
Number eight on your plan.
So where it says, except as required in extreme icing events? And the reason that I'm asking you to do that is that we don't have any way of identifying what is or isn't an extreme icing event, and if it's left to applicants to decide for themselves, it pretty much defeats the idea that you've got a restriction on salt. So just, no salt use on the property.
Okay, when I met with the commissioner, I already, they suggest that, and I accept it.
Okay.
And I, I told him I will use sand instead of salt.
Sand is perfect. Use as much sand as you want.
Yeah.
But in terms of this note, just change that note a little bit, so it says, no salt or deicing compounds to be used on site, period, end of sentence.
Okay.
The second question or thought that I have on this new plan that you left here tonight with the elevations?
Yes.
Do you have the original version of this that we could take a look at? Because mine is so light, I can't see any building on it.
Mine, mine is going to be the same thing, because it was on the small paper, and I blow it, they ask me to blow it. This is what it's to look like.
Do you have it on the small paper? Do you have a copy with you on the small paper?
No, I don't.
Okay. One of the things that we would like then, or I would like, is for you to submit a legible copy of this, even if it is on the small paper, so that I can see what it is, because I can't tell what to make out of this stuff. There's no, there's no building showing up at all in mine. The labels are very clear, but I can't see any building.
I'll, I'll, I'll submit the, the small paper to, to the town.
Jillian, do you need a large one that's legible too, or?
If it's possible, it's preferable to have a large one.
I will, I will make sure you've got the small one and the big one.
Okay.
That we can see and read?
Yes.
Okay. Those are the questions that I had off the top of my head. I don't know, I'll open it up for other members of the board that want to ask or discuss what you've done and what you've changed. Nelson?
Okay, well, that was the first thing that I noticed tonight. I couldn't, my copy, I can't read either, so I would like to see a copy that we can see. I, I don't see how we can approve a, a plan that we can't see, and so I would like to have that available to us. Otherwise, I wanted to commend you, Mr. Schweri, because you've come a long way since June, when we started talking about this and giving us what we need to make an approval. And so I like the idea of what you've tried to do here, and it looks like it'll be okay, you just can't tell, because there is no building shown. You understand?
Okay.
Okay? The other thing I wanted to mention, I like the, I like the easement that you've shown for the sidewalk. I think that's in conformance with what we had asked for. I would hope it would be acceptable to Public Works to have an easement like this, and I guess I'd like their review of it at some point, Mr. Chairman, for the board, just to be sure that that's enough to work in. He's got a 10-foot easement to build a 5-foot sidewalk, and that sounds okay to me, but I'd just like Public Works to weigh in on that. The other thing, the other thing, the wording of the request on the sidewalk waiver, it says these, it says "we," you've used the plural here, like "we" and "us."
I meant "I."
You meant "I," okay.
Yeah, I meant "I."
I didn't know if you had a partner.
I, no, I saw a couple of mistake on printing, and it's like the first line saying "le," instead of "la," you know?
Yeah.
I saw a couple of mistake, but...
Oh, yeah, I noticed that too, but I wasn't that sure of my French, so I, okay. The other thing was the, it says that we are requesting a sidewalk waiver using the criteria that the specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of the land in such site plan indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. I, I can't agree with those words. I don't think that waiving it will, will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations, and for that reason, I'd probably not vote in favor of, of a motion that was made that way. That's all I have at the moment, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Are there other comments or questions for Mr. Schweri? Let's take one minute to at least ask for some public input and see if there's any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in. Going once, or twice? There aren't people coming forward to weigh in on the application, so we'll close the public hearing. Jillian, did we vote on the full site plan review waiver?
Yes, at the last meeting.
We've already done that?
Yeah.
So we have to consider his sidewalk waiver first?
Uh, yes, I believe that would be...
What's the will of the board with respect to the sidewalk waiver?
Well, Mr. Chairman, excuse me for a second. If you want me to, I'll write a letter to admit and to allow the town of Merrimack to build a sidewalk on the front of my property.
Yeah, that's what that easement is, and so that's covered already. You're already there, in terms of that bit. I think what the applicant's done is he's taken most of the front of his property that's already paved, and he's going to remove a bunch of the pavement, so that what's left is, in the general configuration of a sidewalk, what he's looking for a waiver on is the part to the south where it encounters that steep hill and a telephone pole in the middle of it, and he's looking for a waiver of that. I get that Nelson's point that the spirit and intent of the regulation is that there be sidewalks, and if there's a waiver, then there is a sidewalk, but I, I think in this case, the specific lay of the land makes it nearly impossible for him, beyond his control with a phone pole there and, and this steep embankment, to try to figure out how to reasonably accomplish a sidewalk there. I don't know how far it is between, you know, to sort of walk next to the road for that bit before you get onto the sidewalk by the library, which, you know, will give you another parcel further down the road, not too, not too far before you encounter more spaces without sidewalks. It doesn't matter to me which of the statutory criteria we use to explain what we would do, but I think that a sidewalk waiver of that little bit is appropriate in this case, and I would support it if there was a motion to that end.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the waiver of the sidewalk on the basis that the site conditions make it unnecessary, but that Mr. Chowry, having expressed his willingness to grant an easement at any time the town seeks to do that work, I think that satisfies me that it's justified granting a waiver on this subject.
Okay, um, let's, where's our reference to the statutory criteria for waivers?
It wasn't printed in this one, I was struggling to get, we got the face of... I was hoping that, there's nothing in the paper that says...
What your two criteria are?
One is flatley.
Oh, look, in flatleys, which flatley? Dated?
There you go.
Oh, oh, I see. The strict, strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship, the applicant, and a waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, specifically because an easement's going to be granted to the town.
Okay, is there a second for Aleister's motion to grant the waiver? Second by Jeff. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chairman.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Any abstaining? One, two, three, four to one to grant that sidewalk waiver, so the motion passes. With that, in Lynn's arrival, I think I had one of you appointed to...
You've got, you've got two.
Oh, no, you were...
We still need two, because Vincent's not here, and...
Yeah, I knew, but I do need to correct who was appointed to sit in for whom.
I was appointed for Michael.
Mike and Desiree, and nobody was in for, okay, I got you. We're still straight. So Lynn's now here and voting. I didn't know if I had stuck one of you guys in Lynn's spot. Or Mr. Russo's spot. So now that we've dealt with the waiver, what's up next is to consider what we were doing with potential final disposition of the application, or any other action based on what we've discussed here tonight. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant final approval, subject to compliance verification presented to this board of the elevations of the building, to its final satisfy, so it's approval, but with a compliance hearing to clarify the elevations.
Plus all of the conditions in the staff...
Plus all the other conditions on the, Jillian's lovely memo, yes, please.
And one of the ones that Nelson brought up here tonight was also not in the staff, oh, the change to the icing note.
That was yours.
And Public Works approval of the sidewalk easement.
Yeah.
So, subject to all of those conditions...
That's right, Mr. Chairman.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second for that motion? Second by Mr. Sebring, any discussion? I think that the only discussion that I would offer is just to sort of shape what might be a compliance hearing. Do we expect the applicant to appear? Would he submit the document, and we would have a look at it under other items of concern? What would we like to do? Do we want to have it something that's going to have public input? We probably ought to get a feel for how we would do that compliance hearing, and I would think submitting the document and having us consider it under discussion items is probably sufficient for me, but I don't know for you guys.
I'd be happy with that, Mr. Chairman. I think we just want to be, I mean, whatever Mr. Chowry does just about is going to make that building look better than it is. But I, but I would like to, for a, a discussion item on compliance to see, so we go finally see it before you and I sign the documents.
So we'll get a big plan like this, or small plans like this, that we can see the buildings on?
Yeah.
And then we just do that in a discussion. Lynn?
And I would suggest that the applicant be here in case we have questions.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay, I think that makes sense as well.
And then the, let me understand, this is at a public meeting with the board?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yes.
Wanted to be clear on that.
Oh, sorry, Nelson, I apologize.
Yeah, okay.
Now, Jillian, help me if I'm about to step in it here. If we're going to take any action based on what we see in this plan, does it need to be an agenda to item on a specific meeting, rather than a general item of discussion?
I believe we've done the compliance hearing under other items of discussion before, so I think that would be fine way to do it.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do that, if that's the will that everybody wants to do.
I don't, I'm not clear on that, Mr. Chairman. What do you mean by that? You mean, we just have a discussion and then?
We receive this, this item, and whatever meeting we have it at, when we get to our discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern?
Yeah.
This is a discussion for the board to consider?
Yeah, and Mr. Schweri will be here?
Yes.
To help us with the discussion, and help us understand the plan?
Yeah.
And so we'll be clear on it. And so, what did you mean when you said it's just an item of discussion? I guess I...
Because an item of discussion could happen at any meeting when he submits this, rather than us saying that he's going to submit it on October 5th, and he's going to be on our agenda for October 5th, and then we have a public hearing and...
So it will not be an agenda item, is what you're saying?
Well, it's, I'm letting the board decide that, I'm not hearing it one way or another. I'm just trying to be clear what it is.
The proposed motion was for that to be the case, yes.
That it be...
It'd be a discussion item held at the full board with Mr. Chowry present, but it's not going to be agenda'd on the, it's not actually going to be as an agenda, it'll be under items for discussion, it'll be a, that restaurant, review of the compliance of the, of the elevations.
Yeah. If he's going to be here, what difference does it make? Why don't we just, because if you, it doesn't, oh, sorry. It doesn't make a huge difference to be one way or another, but if you're putting it on an agenda, you got to decide which one you're going to put it on here tonight, and if it doesn't happen, then, then you've got to actually formally continue it, and if any of that process falls apart, then Mr. Schweri's giving notice to all of his abutters of his next public hearing and going through that process, which I understand costs our department a little bit of money to do, and so if you put it under the discussion items to be considered whenever it comes in, you avoid some of that stuff. But again, I don't have a concern one way or another, whatever's will of the board. I am not advocating for one option or the other. The motion that's been made is to consider it under discussion items in our normal agenda whenever he submits it, and that's the motion that's been seconded. Is there any other discussion on that? All in favor of conditional final approval, subject to all the conditions and things that we've discussed here tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed? Any abstaining? So five to one, with Mr. Disco voting against it to approve it. You are approved, and when you have this plan ready, you submit it to the department, and they'll tell you when to come into one of our meetings to talk about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you, and thank you for all of the work that you've done to work through the process. I know it's a little bit confusing when you don't do it regularly.
No problem.
Now, how do I pronounce the name of your restaurant?
La Terraces.
La Terraces. Got it.
Thank you.
I look forward to it.
Which is the terraces in French, I believe.
Yes, I do.
Yep.
Okay. With that, let me...
I'd like to note that that was a pretty quick turnaround in this part, by the way, just, just about 90 days or so.
Yeah, that was...
That's pretty darn good.
I think so, I think that was pretty good. Let me introduce this item. Item five on our agenda is the John J. Flatley Company as the applicant and owner. Its review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a site plan to construct 240 multifamily residences, clubhouse, and associated parking and drainage improvements per the requirements of the Flatley Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit. The parcels are located at 645, 673, 685, 703, and 707 DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation, and Wellhead Protection Districts, tax map 6E, lot 31, 33, 34, 35, and 36. The item is continued from the June 16th, July 21st, August 18th, September 1st Planning Board meetings. And as I did before, my, the law firm that I work for has done some work for the Flatley Company, and because of that, I will recuse myself, and I offer that explanation because I didn't do so last time, and it caused a little confusion as to why I decided to go sit by myself. So I will turn the gavel over to our esteemed secretary here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I start, and I think Kevin will allow me this comment, last night, I, at the suggestion of the board from the last meeting, I attended the Conservation Commission meeting last night with Kevin, in fact. The item that we were considering or asking the Conservation Commission to reconsider was the use of the bridge over the wetlands. Those of you who are here then will remember that Mike Redding, in particular, made a passionate plea that it would be a good idea to have the, the trail path over the bridge, which does, there is a bridge there now, as it would be educational, rather than have it skirt around the wetlands and keep it therefore closer to the buildings. The comments that I made were welcomed, in fact, Chairman Tenhae did in fact point out that we didn't really even have to go to them, because if we wanted to do it, we could do it anyway, and to hell with them, but I did make the point that we were trying to work with them, not against them. After some discussion, questions and answers, mainly Kevin had to do the answering, and I've just started the ball rolling. The basically Conservation Commission have agreed that the bridge may be retained in its basic position. They would like to get it extended, so it's a little further out from the wetlands at each edge. They want a post and rail fence on each side for some distance leading up to the bridge. What they're trying to do is to stop people actually going into the wetlands. They're very happy for them to walk along the path and go over it, they don't want them actually to paddle in it. They specifically said they do not want stone dust to be used on the path close to the wetlands, and Kevin agreed that he would tamp that down with whatever, something else. They want the bridge maintenance to be in the maintenance plan that will come before, as part of the, the program for the, for the whole site. They don't want it to be allowed to fall into disrepair. And Kevin offered the use of information panels detailing floor and fauna to be seen, so they're going to, little panels where this is a frog, this type of frog, and this type of daisy, or whatever it is. They do want keep-to-the-path signs, and they also raised the question of, of dogs using the wetlands as a bathroom, but Kevin did make the point that in fact in their properties, they don't encourage, or I think even you used the word allowed, don't allow dogs, but they do want specifically that if there are dogs on the site from the residents, they do not want them going into the wetlands to relieve their feelings. Did I do everything right there from Kevin?
That sounds, uh...
Okay.
Completely accurate.
Right, so are, based on that... Right, so based on that, let us get to the sort of more formal side. Kevin, please sign in and please take us through what you want to add to us today. The main thing I think we got from last time was a discussion, we wanted some of the missing information and the transport impact assessment, various other bits and pieces of the drawing, and then the somewhat contentious item regarding what we do about building number five. But I throw the ball back to you, and you please talk to us about these matters.
Sure, thank you. The last meeting, the plan, I guess, wasn't accepted for, because we didn't have the architecturals and all that good stuff. That has all been submitted, along with the traffic impact assessment, the architecturals are included, and so on. To bring members that weren't here last time up to speed, the proposal in total is for two-hundred-and-forty apartment units, one and two-bedroom mix within five buildings, or five forty-eight unit buildings. We're also proposing a clubhouse, tennis courts, playground area. Playground area is right here, tennis courts are in this area here. There'll also be a clubhouse and a pool in that area. Part of the entire layout, as Mr. Milnes just mentioned, is a perimeter walkway. The proposal for the walkway around the site is stone dust, six foot wide, really just to keep within the natural kind of feel of the site. In the area where we spoke with conservation, which is in this area, there's an existing little bridge made out of timbers. That's going to be replaced. The commission asked that we set the supports for the bridge a little further apart off of the wetland edge, which we agreed to do. And as Mr. Milnes said, we'll have fencing in the buffer zone to keep people on that path. And in areas close to that wetland, even though it's outside of the buffer zone, just at first glance, we're thinking twenty to twenty-five feet, we'll just keep it as a wooded path. We'll probably line that, I don't know if we'll continue the fence or maybe with some sort of stakes to keep people on a path before switching it back over to stone dust, which will go around the site. I guess at this point, let me just point out that, as you know, the plans have been revised, CLD has received the plans, the town has received the plans, the water department has received the plans. And I think at this point, everything is hopefully on track for a possible vote in October at the next meeting. We'll know more once any further comments come back. But as we mentioned at the last meeting, the comments weren't very, you know, there was nothing that, there was so severe that it was unable to be overcome, so those will be dealt with also. Just flip into another page, show that front area a little closer. What we also discussed at the last meeting was speaking with the Homestead Restaurant, which is located in the bottom-left corner. That's a restaurant on DW Highway. And they approached us looking for some additional parking. Right now, they're parking across the street at the church. There hasn't been any issue yet, but they, as well as I would suspect some of the people actually crossing the street, may be a little wary about crossing DW Highway, especially at nighttime. So they did approach us about basically requesting some additional parking for their restaurant on our property, which we have plenty of room to do, we're happy to do. So we did speak with them, and we do have an agreement in place, and it is shown right here, the extra spots. And as part of our discussion here at the last meeting, was extending a walkway from the apartment site to that parking lot. Those aren't shown on your plans, I did put one in pen here. So that will extend from the proposed roadway to the homestead parking lot, so people in the apartments are able to walk down the walkway towards the front of the site and then cut across the back of the homestead and getting to get into that establishment safely, and back home safely. The addition of parking spaces is a little over twenty, so at this point in time, the homestead feels that that's enough, there's actually more room. If in the future they need more, we can easily discuss that with them. We've, we're in the process of designing the drainage that'll handle the extra runoff in most parking areas, as well as the walkway, it's not going to be a lot of runoff, but still needs to be controlled. And right now, the design is going to be a rain garden, so it'll be just a natural low depression area that it probably won't even know it's a drainage area, it'll just look like a flower patch. It'll be just a decorative area. They'll serve the purpose of beautifying the area as well as providing drainage control. As far as New Hampshire Department of Transportation, we continue to work with them. As far as the turning lanes on DW Highway, that design's been completed. I believe a meeting is in the midst of being set up with DOT to keep that moving forward. But we don't expect a whole lot in the, as far as issues, as far as that goes. We provided turning lanes, two turning lanes out of our site onto DW Highway, one to go south, one to go north. And there'll also be a left-hand turn lane coming from the north to take a left into our site. That will allow traffic on DW Highway to continue to go through to the south without any backup and to the north where it's a right-hand turn into the site there, no issues expected traffic-wise in that area also. I guess, to the next, to the next point, I guess I'd like to show you some architecturals of the buildings.
Can I, before we go, can we, let's see, we can, I think now, in my opinion, but obviously it's up to the board, have we got enough information for us to accept the plan for review? Well, I'm looking for somebody to make a motion.
Well, yeah. The plan that we have doesn't quite match everything he said. At least I couldn't find it, I couldn't find the pathway you talked about.
No, it's not there, Nelson.
From the tennis court, but, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that was just based on discussion with conservation yesterday. That will be on the, that will be on the next set of plans.
So, that's what I mean, it's not quite what he said, but we can accept this for discussion if that's what.
That's what, we haven't done that yet. We have not even accepted this for discussion.
Substantially complete.
Yeah.
Not totally, substantially.
Substantially complete, I would agree with.
Is that a motion, Nelson?
That is a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll settle.
And it's been seconded by Lynn, thank you very much. I put this to the vote, is it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? So that's one, two, three, four, five, nil. The plan has been accepted as substantially correct for discussion. Please move on now to the architectural.
Thank you. The, the plan in front of you shows a rendering of a four-story, forty-eight-unit apartment building. These plans here match the colors of what was constructed at our site in Nashua. There may be some variation to the color, not a lot. We've got some blue and green, we've got some gray and green, and we've got some red and green. This shows a good example of not only the front of the building, but the sides, as well as some landscaping in the front. The landscaping plan that's within the set that you have in front of you obviously is a little more detailed. There are shrub plantings in the front as well as trees. But in general, all of the units will have decks that lead to their outside. All units will be one and two-bedroom, there may be a one-bedroom with an extra closet or storage area, that type of thing. The garages that are shown on the plan, each garage will have one handicap accessible stall which, I believe, there's all those five garages, so there's five stalls there, plus the spots that are outside of the buildings meet the ADA requirements. All of the units will have screening up on the top, which will screen the air conditioning units, heating units, whatever happens to be on the roof mechanically. So those will be screened from view. With the height and the way the grades are out there, it probably wouldn't be too much of an eyesore to start with, but we've got them screened now, it looks great, so odds are we're going to continue with that and continue to screen that. As far as the overall site, I really, I think Chad and I had really hit on a bunch of that our last meeting. I don't know if there's any additional questions at this point from the board, I would just like to thank Chairman Milnes for his attendance at Conservation yesterday. I think that they were comfortable, I think they were happy to see the planning board and the Conservation Commission working together. We're happy to do our part to make the site a little more, I guess, I'll call it unique. We're crossing a wetland and we'll have some learning material in the, in those areas. Hopefully it'll spur some interest as far as the nature out there and the quietness. The site actually will be very quiet. And the rear of the site also, where the path runs around to the back to where there's a detention basin. We've got, there's probably seven to ten, seven to ten acres back, well, maybe seven acres. They're basically going to remain natural except for a construction of the detention basin, so we will have trees, we will have a path, we'll have an access road for the fire department down to the train tracks. So there's a lot of benefit there for the city, for the owners of the rails, for the owners adjacent to the rails to allow the fire department down there. But in general, the whole rear will be a very quiet area as well, where people can sit and just enjoy, enjoy the nature back there also.
And watch the coal trains go by.
Watch the coal trains go by.
Okay. At ten miles an hour.
Thank you, Kevin, very much for your presentation. I'll throw the matter open for questions. Please feel free.
Well, there's a couple of discussion items we need to continue to talk about. I think it's the, the issue of the five buildings versus the phasing plan that was presented in the CUP, where we had four buildings in the road, I believe.
I can tell you exactly what it says. Would it help if I read what the CUP?
It would help a lot, thank you. I don't have the words in front of me.
The phasing in the CUP, the approved and signed CUP, says item one, first phase to be four residential buildings, the fifth building for future phases, and not included as part of phase one would be the southernmost building closest to the residential neighborhood to the south. Second phase is to include any portion of the non-residential stroke commercial development located to the south of the St. Gabean driveway in concluding construction of both pedestrian and vehicular conditions to the residential phase of the project. And the third phase may include any other portion of development, including the fifth residential building. So in theory, there are three phases. The first phase gets four residential buildings. The second phase basically is to link the domestic site, if you like to use that term, up to the St. Gabean junction where the traffic signals are near the, what was the old fish restaurant? And then the third phase is any other development, including the fifth residential building. That is what is there, that is what has been signed by just about everybody, his uncle, and it was signed and by, Flatley's designed by the various people here, there, and everywhere. So, if you read the staff, no, you didn't read the staff, the staff memo to me for this meeting says, "The staff recommends discussing phasing with the applicant, and if the board approves a phasing plan that does not meet that which is outlined in the CU Development Agreement," which is what I just read, "notifying that the applicant will have to notify that the CUP will need to be amended." That's, there's a bit more, but that's not relevant to this thing. So what we're really saying is, as, as it's been outlined in the CUP agreement, which has been signed and lodged with, wherever that gets lodged, they cannot have the fifth building. I understand from a, if you like, my, a sort of financial hat or an engineering hat, I understand why Flatley's would like the fifth building. However, that wasn't what we agreed when we first discussed this, and it's not what's agreed in the CUP. It's up to us, in conjunction with the applicant, to decide if we want to change that. The only thing I would caution is that if we amend this CUP, we're liable to amend, we're liable to be required or asked or pressurized, or whatever word you like to use, to amend other CUPs either in the future or that are in existence and have not yet been completed. And for those of you who are not sure what I mean, I just say Harris-Pond and leave it at that. Now, I'm only repeating, regurgitating what I've been advised, what I've been told, and what I've got in front of me. I throw the matter open to you to discuss.
Nelson head the floor.
I'm hoping Nelson will now continue.
Well, I'm in favor of continuing with the CUP as, as approved unless there's some compelling reason not to, or some, and I haven't heard any of those yet, but Kevin, I'm sure you can come up with, you may be able to come up with something. But just the fact that it's, it's more economical to build five buildings, which I would have to agree with, that to me is not compelling, because that was part of the original deal, you know? And our concern as planning board is to plan for this as a mixed-use development, where we would have mixed uses, and we want to assure the town and those that we represent that we will have mixed uses here, and that's why they held out one building in the CUP. So, that's, that's be all I would have to say.
Anything else you want to add, Nelson? While any other matters while you have the floor.
On any other matters, there are some other matters. There's the matter of connection with Allen Road that shows up in the, in the staff memo to us this week. The, it's under item number six of the staff memo, the applicant shall address the following and any forthcoming comments from the Public Works Department, which said that the parcels look, the New Hampshire DOT has to weigh in. The project is within a quarter mile of the Merrimack River, comments should be solicited from the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee. And C, the project should connect to the right-of-way of Allen Road with a full-town standard road or an emergency access road. Now that's something that is being recommended to us.
That's different than what we said earlier.
Yeah, and that's not, that's not on the plans at all, of course, as I see. So I just, maybe we ought to talk about that and.
We will be, we are meeting with, with them to discuss that comment. It's kind of been discussed at length with them in the past, and what, what the result of the initial set of discussions was, we've, one, we've got a wetland at the end of Allen Road, two, there are people's sheds, believe it or not, in the Allen Road right-of-way that's not built, they think it's part of their yard, so.
It happened.
And the biggest, the biggest one is, you know, there's, there's plenty of room on here without paving Allen Road and destroying that area to provide secondary access into the site. We've got twenty-five hundred feet of frontage. We could construct an emergency access, they could come in on the dirt, on the dirt road that comes off of DW Highway now to access the site. There's many different ways to access the site, but we are going to, we are going to have a conversation with them prior to the next hearing and hopefully have all that straightened out.
Okay, I can, I can see that.
Now, at the last meeting, I.
Now, at the last meeting, I raised that question, and I thought that had been dropped altogether.
So did we.
Okay. And that's come back in now since?
Apparently, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's why I bring it up.
Thank you both. Anything else, Nelson? We'll come back to the CUP in a minute.
If I can have another turn later, I'll, I'll pass on to...
All right. Len, have you anything you...
I've got a couple of things. I agree that, that Allen Road was, was dropped at the last time. I don't like the connection with Allen Road at all. If we can provide another access, I'm all for it, but I really don't like connecting up with Allen Road. And I think one of the other things that was talked about was we created a loop in there to make access easier, so that it wasn't just a straight shot in. So that, I think that addressed that. Going back to the fifth building, my compelling reason on the fifth building is not so much the, the economics of it, which is, is a given for anybody, but I don't like having four established buildings there for quite a while with people and kids and anybody else accessing it and suddenly having construction vehicles going through that whole site. That's my biggest problem with having that, that fifth building there. I know it's a matter of, of changing what we approved before. If we decide we can do that, that's an easy thing to do, but my problem with that is, is the safety of the individuals that are there. And one, one other thing, the whole purpose of the, the mixed use, as I understood it when it was developed or established, was that we wanted the property to be tax-positive as far as doing it, and at the time, residentials tended to be a drain on the taxes, whereas commercial tended to be positive, and by mixing the use, that made the entire project tax-positive.
You are correct.
Have we done any analysis on whether that has changed now and what, what the impact is of these buildings?
I think if I go right, and Kevin, you, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we go right back to the early stages of when you came with the first approval. The evidence was that with the full site, it was, was a tax-positive, and from memory, if we, and I haven't brought it with me, it's a pile at home, if you don't do any commercial, if you just did that residential, it will in fact be tax-negative. Yes, you're correct. We do need the commercial or industrial.
I'm, I'm asking, in today's climate, if that is in fact true and whether we have done any analysis, and I'm asking...
Not since, not since the original...
I'm asking planning, if, community development, if we've done any of that.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Is it an easy enough thing to do?
I believe we would have to get some outside help in order to get a study like that.
Because what I'm seeing in some of the other areas in the state where I've had some dealings, particularly in the southern tier, that residential is becoming more tax-positive than it used to be.
If, if I may.
Please.
And I, I also did not bring the fiscal impact study, but I can tell you that in that fiscal impact study, there was a positive benefit with the apartments. There was not a loss, and the main reason for that was these are not single-family homes. These are one and two-bedroom apartments that are going to result in very little, probably a negligible impact to the school system. If you recall, at our last meeting, I was referring back to the same, similar apartments in Nashua, of which there's 564 apartment units there, and I think there's nine children, 10, 9, 10, 11, it's, it's not more than that. So the net impact, especially because these are one and two-bedroom, high-end units, will not cause any impact to the school system, which tends to get into a, a, you know, tax impact, and then, you know, negative tax impact. So with the commercial, there is additional positive benefit, but with the apartments, there is still a plus that will occur with the town.
Perhaps we could ask, if, when, you've already indicated that you're looking for final approval at the next meeting. Could I, could I ask that you bring that to us?
Absolutely.
So it can be illustrated, I think, to the satisfaction of all concerned. Okay?
Sure.
Along with that, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'd like to see the fiscal impact that went with the CUP, which I've never seen.
Okay. I mean, I, I know we've got it. We can dig it out. I don't suppose you've got it with you, have you, Jim?
I might have it in file, but it, it was a part of the discussion when the CUP was being approved, and we can get you a copy.
Yeah, I just don't remember reading it. Do we have a copy? Can we make a copy available?
I believe so, but it's been a while since that packet was put together.
If, I can, I can forward another copy of the CUP one.
We have copies.
You have none.
It will be in the file somewhere. It's just a question of digging.
Okay. I'd just like to add that to the fact...
Please, please, fine. No problem at all. Len, have you, happy?
Nope, that, that was, that was one of my points.
Tom, have you got any comments?
Yeah, I'm still concerned about that wetland area. I don't see a motion in the, in the minutes authorizing you to go before the Conservation Commission...
It was a request that I did go. It was specifically mentioned that I should attend, and I said I would.
I think for the, in, in the future, it might be a good idea if there was something more formal than a suggestion when you're dealing with another, with another board and you're making representations in front of them. I mean, it's just that, just, you know, I'm not going to argue with you about what happened the other day, okay? But the minutes do not reflect anything. It just said that you're going to go talk to them.
I think he volunteered to go, and I don't think anyone objected.
If you read, if you read the minutes, it says Austin Milnes will be in touch with the M.C., the Merrimack Conservation Commission about the matter.
Yeah, I'd like, I did see that.
Well, that's...
I'm saying is for...
I, I spoke to Jim Tenhav, and he said, "Please come and tell us, talk to us about it."
But for transparency purposes in the future...
I understand you, and thank you. I will see that I don't, I don't again.
I would suggest that it be a little bit more formal than that. Otherwise, you know, people will be going back to the 1970s when there was all kinds of accusations of inside dealing and all kinds of other stuff going on, okay?
But if I give you, if I can help you at all, I can assure you, two of the members of the Conservation Commission were very strong about preserving the, the wetlands features, which is why what came out of the discussion, which I spoke at the beginning, it was emphasized above all that, that there was not to be any impact on the, on the wetlands. They have to make the bridge bigger, they have to, we're not allowed to use stone, and they don't want any dogs...
But it wasn't their preference that, their preference was that it was not impacted.
Well, their original...
But if they're, but if the, if the planning board, which has the authority to make the decision, okay, was going to make the decision, then they would prefer to see the conditions that they, the issues that they raised.
Well, after last night's condition, they reversed themselves and did, it was a motion carried that we could do what I outlined. What I read to you tonight was not a, a gun at their heads. They actually agreed with this presentation, and Chairman Tenhav said, you know, "That's it. Do you want me to actually write the minute in advance of tonight's meeting?" And I said, "No."
Okay.
So they did actually agree that provided we stuck to those conditions, they would change their mind.
Well, the issue for me is that we are constantly chipping away with these incremental impacts on these areas that we at one point or another voted to try to preserve for, for good reason, and chipping away at it, and over time, that tends to degrade the environment in the town completely. Having dealing, having dealt with, you know, we had this, I had, we've had the council, a couple of members of the council were talking to the, to Penachuk, and they're ruing the day that they developed all that property around their watershed, because now the cost for them to develop, to, to provide, to comply with Clean Water Act is far outweighs whatever advantage they got out of it, okay? And that's all I'm trying to say is that we need to be mindful that those things, you just can't keep chipping away at them, okay? You've got a gas pipeline coming through here that's going to really make a, a big difference in that whole piece, okay? And we're getting the same story from them. "Oh, don't worry about it, we can take care of it." Okay? We've done this before. It's not going to be a big deal. In a couple of years, everything will have grown back, all right? But it's, but it's that incremental degradation of those resources that's concerning. We're not the kind of town we were five years ago or 10 years ago, where we could perhaps stand that kind of change. We're getting out of that now with the development that we've seen in here. And so that's where my upset over that is, if you will, you know, and my concern with the whole thing, with this whole issue of, of doing that. They had already said that they were willing to make adjustments to go around that piece. That would have been my preference, but I'm late to the game here. So at that point, I'm just making my concerns known to the, to the full planning board about that, and please keep in mind as we go forward that these, you just can't keep doing this. It's just not going to be to our benefit, and you're not, then I don't see us, the planning board, doing the job that they're supposed to be doing in having an orderly development for the community. And at this point, I'm done.
If, if I may, I, I, I think that if there wasn't a structure there already, that this probably wouldn't have come up in, in conversation period. That area has, I guess, been used by snowmobilers, people walking in their dogs or driving their dirt bikes or whatever. So our hope, and the commission tended to be in agreement, is that what is going to be there to replace what's there now, it will actually improve that area protected more, not only that area, but will protect the buffer zone around it with the fencing that's going to be put up. And I don't think the commission would have agreed to it if it wasn't going to be an overall improvement. We're going to, again, the, the abutments are going to be further outside of the wetland. The bridge will still be there. It'll be in better shape. It'll be protected. People won't be allowed to walk in the buffer zone, except along the path.
And I appreciate the work that, you know, the, you know, the, your willingness to do all that.
I mean, it's very, it's very important to us to, you know, try to keep, keep doing the best I can.
But don't forget, we're, we're now inserting a population to fill 240 units that wasn't there before. That's a different dynamic when you're dealing with something, with, with, with these kinds of sensitive areas. It's a very different dynamic.
I do, I do agree, and this'll, and this'll be the last I speak of it. I think if we don't do what we've asked the commission to allow and the planning board to allow us to do, that honestly, I'll tell you, if I was walking through there, I would walk down the path and I would see that beat-up log bridge sitting there, and I would walk across it, and it, it wouldn't be protected. The wetland wouldn't be protected. I'm, I'm just talking from a, a general natural human standpoint, because people are going to walk through there and say, "Well, I'm not going to walk all the way around here. I'm going to do this." And in this way, in this way, at least we're protecting, you know, 25, 35 feet on each side, you know, plus taking care of an additional 25 feet on each side by not stone dusting it and, and that type of thing. So we, we honestly, we hope it, it protects it more than it's being protected now.
I do too.
That was the goal, so.
Can I just note that the wetland buffer impacts will also require a special exception from the zoning board?
Right. I'm sorry.
So if there are wetland buffer impacts, that will require a special exception from the zoning board, and the applicants already noted that they intend to...
Within this project?
Yes.
Yeah.
We've, we've got some parking areas, same, same area, roadway parking areas that are within the buffer, which we would have to go for, but now, you know, we'll, we'll go forward with, with this, with the crossing, and we may show, we may show both to the zoning board, say, "Well, we're either going to do this or we're going to do, go across it, one or the other," and just try to get a blanket permit, and whatever, whatever the board decides, you know, we'll be elsewhere anyway with, so.
Anything else, Tom? Jeff?
Yeah. A question on the traffic study. They talk about the, the number, have you read the traffic, before I get into this, have you read the traffic study?
I have. A little while back, but I did read it.
All right. They talk about the number of cars exiting the morning during the weekday peak hours, and they talk about the ones coming back in. And I, I have to admit, I have not read the, the ITE trip generation statistics for apartments, but I was quite surprised at the number, the very low numbers that they're coming up with. Because first of all, I was, when I, when I read the document, I was surprised that signage was all that was going to be required, and you wouldn't end up with a traffic light there, or, or, or a roundabout. So obviously, the numbers support that decision, but was there any concern that those numbers might be too low? And again, I have no idea how that, that was generated.
There were not concerns that that number was too low. When the entire CUP plan was presented, we looked at it in two ways. Well, we looked probably at it in three ways. Development to the right-hand side of the north side of the St. Cobain driveway, the development between the St. Cobain driveway and the apartments, and the apartments. With the construction of the middle part just south of St. Cobain, that entrance there, depending on how traffic is when that's done, because we're going to have to do another traffic study as, as all that moves forward, that may require a light. The goal was to keep DW Highway flowing and not have to put lights in there, and that's why we've got the two lanes, we're doing some adjustments to DW, so there'll be a left-hand turn to take a left into the site heading south.
Yep, yep.
So cars can continue going through.
Right, yep.
And really, you know, the, the only people, if you want to call it inconvenienced, if it comes to that, which I don't think it will, would be the people in the apartments. I don't think it's going to be an inconvenience because in the morning, they're leaving, and traffic's a little heavy, but it's not awful. And in the afternoon, it's a little heavier, but they're coming in. They're not going out, they're not staying on DW Highway, and, and really, that was the, kind of the tipping point, if you want to call it, for the traffic study. About to just keep talking here, but regarding the CUP, the construction occupancy of the fifth apartment building and the parking for the Homestead, I don't have the CUP decision in front of me, but I believe that something was required to be constructed for a commercial site south of the St. Cobain entrance. It wasn't necessarily a building, it was something to benefit, a commercial use, and in talking with Mike McDonough of the Homestead, he needs, he needs more parking. His use is commercial. The parking and drainage will be on our site, and based on that, I don't believe that the board needs to amend the CUP decision. I believe that if you break it down to exactly what the CUP decision says, that the proposal of the commercial parking for the Homestead, which will be on our site with the drainage, meets to the letter of the decision of the CUP. So I don't think it puts the board in a, in a difficult spot of having to change something and open doors for other developments to come back and, and attack the board, I guess. I'll use that lightly. Well, I'll state again, and again, I'm sorry to keep going back to the Nashua development, but we have a commercialist, we have a commercial and retail area at the front of that 200 acres that is not developed, or 75% developed, and we were unable to get anyone to really lease those stores. There's a health center, there's a craft brewery area, there's a craft, there's a craft brewer here in town that we hope to speak with, to come out, come out to the site. We've spoken with our leasing agents and given them name and phone numbers, and hopefully they're able to get in touch in the next couple of weeks and see if there's any interest there and keep moving forward. But in Nashua, until we got those apartments up and occupied, not, during construction, there was nothing going on at the front where it was called as Terra Commons, the retail spot out front. But once those apartments were occupied, the retail came in, and they came in pretty quick. We were stuck on one section of that, and that was just leased. There was, we have a bank going in to finish off the Terra Commons property, and that'll be complete.
I have to say, Kevin, when I hear what you say...
I have to say, Kevin, when I hear what you say, it does say, including construction of both pedestrian and vehicle connections from the Saint Cobain driveway. Now, if you say to me you're gonna put in the, the parking space for the homestead and also put in the road that going up to Saint Cobain, you'd probably say, I would agree with you. You'd meet the spirit of the, of the agreement. But if that road doesn't go in as part of, you know, immediately, I'm not sure I can say that the C U P, you are meeting the letter of the C U P.
The, the goal, the goal with the apartments, while we do have a stub for future secondary access, we, we, you know, we never really intended on people being able to free-flow through one site to the apartments. And we discussed this during the C U P process is, you know, if the people in this development, they're, they're going to have two choices. They can take this access road and cut through, but they better be ready for people to be cutting through from the other direction.
I, I hear you, but unfortunately I just read what the legal document said. But I, I'm not saying that's, you know, things can be changed. But the document as constructed says, including construction of pedestrian and vehicle connection. I'm only reading the document. I'm not making a decision. But if nobody else has gotten, does anybody want to offer any further comments on that particular feature?
Yes, I will, because I thought of this while Lynn was speaking after I'd finished my first turn. I think that we, our goal in this whole C U P and doing this as a C U P and as a mixed-use development was to create a mixed-use development in which people could live, work, and shop without getting out onto Route Three or without going elsewhere, that it was gonna be an integrated community that could somewhat, not completely, of course, somewhat be self-contained in, in, to a certain degree. And I think that was our goal in trying to tie these things together, building the spine road and that sort of thing. And I remember you bringing up the argument that the people who lived in the apartments didn't want traffic coming through there. And we sort of thought they wouldn't based on the configuration of the roads. But going the other way, these people can go and shop and they can even walk to it if they're athletic. You know, but at least they can, they can get there without getting out of the development or out of this, this area. So that was one part of the thinking in developing this as a C U P, as an integrated community. And that's why I'm reluctant to.
And I, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with what you're saying. I guess the issue, we, we could put a road in now that connects this to the Saint Cobain road. But a year from now, somebody wants to come in and they've got a, I don't know, fifty thousand square foot retail building or who knows what, the road's in the way. You know, and that, that's really kinda, kinda the problem is even down the road, if somebody comes in with a couple of small buildings here and there, that's great. Everything works. But then somebody comes in with a bigger building, a Dick's Sporting Goods or, you know, Bass Pro Shop or, you know, something that has some size to it. And if it's not designed as things are done, I mean, my feeling is that in designing things for over twenty years is that you're either gonna be redesigning things, you're gonna be ripping roads up and, and God forbid utilities to fit a building in, or you're gonna have to tell these buildings, these companies, sorry, we can't fit you. And we don't wanna do either one of those. You know, this, the, the zoning idea for this is great and it is going to work. There's not a doubt in my mind. It's just gonna have to be done on a step-by-step deal. And, and, you know, we're dealing with that in another city down in Nashua. It's a big site and we've already run into some of it. We've, we put in a road here and then all of a sudden, well, we can't fit, we can't fit this building in. This guy wanted a forty thousand square foot warehouse. Doesn't work. So now we're kind of leaning back a little bit and rethinking on, you know, let's, let's, let's reel ourselves in a little bit and see if we can maybe plan this out, do a plan-as-you-go type thing, or maybe try to fit, fit certain things in or demarcate certain things for certain areas. The issue with this site, unfortunately, is Saint Cobain being in the middle of the site, which we have no problem with Saint Cobain. It just limits our ability to move the road ten feet. If we move the road ten feet, we're, we're losing twenty parking spaces for one side or the other side. So this six thousand square foot or ten thousand square foot building isn't working. And that's what the fear is in doing it. I've got no problem extending the walkway all the way down to Saint Cobain. You know, I think we can concede to that without an issue. And I think, and I, I, I don't know what the board's feeling is if they think, if you think you need to amend the C U P decision or, or not. But I think with, you know, a, a commercial usage of that property over there, that technically is satisfied. The walkway, I've got no problem. But I, I don't think extending a road all the way across at this time, I don't think it's a good idea as an engineer. And I don't, I don't really think overall, or actually, I should say, I do think overall that it may, and it may not, who knows, but it may hinder the site. It'd be nice to have something laid out like we had with a, a bunch of small type buildings, but who knows? Like I said, Dick's, Bass Pro Shop, Target, who, who knows? Who knows who's gonna knock on the door when they see two hundred and forty units, which is probably, you know, four hundred people anyway, sitting on the site. We, we, we hope that that will draw in, you know, retail, commercial uses. And I'm not sure we wanna handcuff them or handcuff ourselves or handcuff the town as to what can go in there by putting a road in at this time. We're, we're committed. We're committed to the site a hundred percent. Talks are continually ongoing with our leasing agents and what we hope will be potential suitors for the site. And like I said at the last meeting, the thing we're getting back from all of at this point is, oh, I see you have apartments. One of the apartments going up. You know, they wanna be sure there are people there to support their business, which I understand. And I try telling them, I'm not a leasing guy, 'cause I don't have the patience for it, but.
I think we could probably sum up at this point on this matter. It's really a question, and either the board votes to stick to the C U P or the board votes to accede to Kevin's impassioned plea for the fifth building to go in at the same time as the other four with a clear understanding, because that's what I'm told from my, the legal people in the community development, and I think Gillian will agree with me, that I haven't, you have no choice, but the C U P would have to be amended. That is the choice. There isn't, I don't believe Kevin's halfway house works. I believe you've gotta do one or the other. And at this point in time, I look for somebody to make a motion.
Have we not accepted this? Is, what is the motion you're looking for, Mr. Chairman?
Well, do you want to make a motion to cons, I mean, I know I could open it to the general public, which, as you can see, is somewhat irrelevant. We have to have a decision. Do we want to allow the five buildings to go up as, as a unit, which makes commercial and engineering and nice to the existing resident sense? But with going with that, the C U P will have to be altered. Or we say, no, we're sticking to the C U P. You can't put up building number five until something else happens. I'm telling you, that is what I believe the options are. You can argue with my, my decision, my interpretation of the information we've got, but that's the, the information, that's the way I interpret it. You've got that or that. There's, there's two baskets. Which way you wanna cast your votes? Anybody wanna argue that those are the two, two options really? Do you buy that those are the options?
I, I agree with you because I think if, if nothing else, the C U P has said the fifth building can't be until phase three.
That's correct.
So I think we have to amend the C U P for that reason alone. Never mind the roads or anything else and whether you consider the homestead commercial. I think it needs to be done. I'm wondering if we can solve both problems by saying, we'll let them build the fifth building as part of phase one, but we won't give them a C O.
Well, I asked that question of the staff and I don't think I got a very good answer. Did I, Gillian?
I think you run into having an empty building for a long time if you allow for that to happen, possibly.
Well, we've, we did that with the, the southern site. We, we, didn't we say you can build the buildings?
Yeah, are we talking about the edge books?
Yes.
No, they've gotta put in, they've got, they can only put in part of the residential until they get a, something, something even, it's only the gas.
I, I thought we said they could build them, but they couldn't get a C O until they had commercial in there.
Gillian, you like that?
I don't believe so off the top of my head, but I would have to verify that.
But even, even if you have an empty building, whether you have an empty building, you don't have a building, it's gonna be the same as far as rentability and getting people in there. But it solves my issue with having the construction going on when you've got people there established in the other buildings. And it solves their problem by having them build all of them at one time. I, I just, I'm just kind of brainstorming here.
No, I brainstormed. That, that was one of my comments. Kevin?
Well, now that I'm, I'm thinking about this more than I, I, I thought I was going to. If we built a commercial building, just hear me out. If we built a commercial site right here, according to the C U P decision, as you read it, there's still something in there that says we need to connect this road with this road. That's about a mile of roadway. So I can almost be a hundred percent sure to say at some point we'll be looking for some sort of change or relief to the C U P decision. And my reasoning is, we have ten people show up and say, hey, we wanna build ten buildings. We want to build one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, ten. And we've got no reason to connect to the Saint Cobain driveway at that time. So I think one way or the other, at some point in time, that the C U P would have to be amended. And that's me, somebody may say they want something right at, right at Saint Cobain too. I don't know. I don't know. But I'm saying hypothetically, we could, we could fill the site up nowhere near the Saint Cobain entrance and still technically not be able to occupy the fifth building. So at some point, we would be looking.
So you're, you're offering that you would build a speculative, commercial piece of something somewhere close to the.
Well, I, I'm not, I, I'm saying somebody may come in and, and, I mean, if I'm, if I own a commercial establishment and I've got two hundred and forty people sitting there, I don't want a building over here.
I take your point. I take your point. So you're saying you would actually put up a speculative, commercial building there? Did I hear you right?
I, I did not, I did not exactly say that.
I'm sorry, I'm putting words into your mouth.
I do not want to speak for John Flatley.
Would you, could I make a suggestion that we defer making a decision on this? You're coming back, I don't know when, to get this finally approved. If you were to come back with some residential, sorry, one commercial proposal of a speculative nature which gave us some comfort, I think you might find the board more amenable. Do I, do I speak for everybody? Does that make sense, Kevin? I know you've gotta go and talk to the powers that be probably. But just, you know, something that somebody could move into would probably make us all feel happy.
I, I will definitely dismiss it.
All right. Let's leave it that, subject like that. For the purposes of correctness, I'll throw the meeting open for public input. There is no public here, so the public input is closed. Is there anything anybody else would like to offer at this point in time? Is there anything else you need from us, Kevin, at this point in time?
I think I'm good at this point. I think we should have all the comments responded to in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, so what date are you looking forward so that we move this to a date certain? What date certain would you like to specify? And don't say in two weeks from hence, 'cause I, I got awful stick from the committee development bringing this one in too quick.
Mid-October?
If there is a possibility that you'll be amending the C U P, I think that we should.
No, the C U P is not gonna be amended. What we're saying is that we would, well, we, we do like.
I think that's what I understood from.
Oh, it's gonna be amended. It's gonna be amended then.
Is that what you were saying, is that there's a strong possibility it will be amended anyway? So you would like to possibly move forward with doing that now?
Sure.
That sounded, that sounded positive.
Keep all the doors open.
What, what are we talking about, Gillian, please? Are you looking the la, last in November or, for last in October or the beginning of November?
If we're gonna be doing that, I would suggest the November meeting.
Which, from my reading of the thing, is November the third.
What's, what's the difference between the last in October and the first in November?
October, you'd have.
No, 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 no. I'm asking, Gillian, why the need for additional time?
It allows.
They, they may want the time, but.
Well, it could allow for him to come into the last meeting of October to amend the C U P if that's what they decide to do.
November third is election day, just.
No.
Not for here.
No?
No.
Okay.
Next election's primary.
If you're running for mayor in Nashua or Manchester, yes. Okay. Shows up on my calendar as election.
Shall we suggest November the third? Date certain?
For, I just, are we talking about amending the C U P on November third or? I'm just, I'm confused with this.
We're talking about continuing this application for the multifamily residential to November third.
And I'm saying why not the end of October?
If the C U P's gonna be amended, I don't think that decision's made yet. But if it's going to be, then he could come in on the October twentieth meeting to do that. So I guess I'll leave it up to Kevin. Would you like?
Well, I, I would just, I guess I'd just like just a tiny bit of direction on the C U P amendment. We wanna see a fully engineered, commercial site building on the plan, a, a conceptual layout, not necessarily engineered at this point. A building, parking, connection. I mean, I think to engineer it at this point might be a little ahead of time. Again, if building size changes a little bit or parking changes or some people want, you know, you got restaurants that want parking around all four sides of the building, you know, some that want it out in front and loading in back, it's, you know.
I'm not certain that the master site plan needs to be revised, but the development agreement would at least need to be revised according to what the board wishes to do for phasing. Does that make sense?
I'm really looking at you for you to tell me what you, what.
The words in the development agreement.
Ah, the words in this, in this.
Would need to be amended.
I think they should be amended to reflect this.
Yes.
If you, therefore, you're suggesting that the amendment is presented to the board on the October the twentieth.
If that's what everybody wishes to move forward with, yes.
And then the, the, the main substance could be, we could approve everything on November the third. Is that what you're thinking?
That's what I'm thinking.
That makes sense to me. That's what I was trying to clarify.
Does that make sense with you, Kevin?
Very much. Yeah, I hope so.
All right, so can I have somebody make a motion to that effect? We are going to amend the C U P and have it presented on October the twentieth for ratification. And then the full, there will be a full-agenda item on November the third, which, which it is hoped we will give approval.
I will so move.
Thank you. Anybody wanna second it? Thank you, Jeff. Everybody happy?
Are we pressing too much on, on community development?
Well, actually, I heard.
I think that works.
She said it works? I'll buy it. If, if, if it doesn't work for. If it doesn't work for either party, then there's always the possibility of disengaging it a little bit further. Kevin, I hope it's been a useful discussion.
We should have a vote on that.
Oh, sorry, do you want to, let's vote on that. So, C U P on October the 20th, and final approval, hopefully, on November the 3rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Kevin, thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mr. Chairman, you could have your job back. You changed jobs just to practice these at the right time, you did.
You did next job.
Well, I don't know about that. Okay.
That brings us to item six on our agenda, which is discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. One item of concern that the staff has brought forward is the need to have the board to consider and approve the amount of the Performance Bond for the Mast Road subdivision, which is over by our wastewater treatment plant. I have a memo from Kyle Fox, who is our deputy director and town engineer, indicating that he's in receipt of a road bond estimate form submitted by Bedford Design Consultants for the right-of-way improvements for Saron Circle, which is part of the Mast Road subdivision. The estimated form was completed by Bedford Design Consultants. It's a 950-foot-long cul-de-sac road that originates on Mast Road. The quantities for the estimate form were taken from the approved plans, and Kyle indicates that he finds the proposed total bond amount of $367,410.89 to be sufficient to complete all of the improvements scheduled in the approved plan set. The owners requested a performance bond length of one year, which the department is agreeable to. The owner understands that the end of the one-year period, the project needs to be completed. Should that not occur, D P W will require an updated bond estimate, or will request calling of the bond. And so, it is before the board to consider whether to approve the total bond amount of $367,410.89. What is the will of the board?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Mahan, second by Mr. Disco. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will abstain, because X T L is a former client of mine. Three, and that makes it 5-0-1, with one abstention. Are there any other discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern? Seeing none, that brings us to the approval of the minutes of September 1st, 2010. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as printed.
Motion is second to approve the minutes as printed. Any discussion?
I moved, Lynn seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That is 5-0-1, with Councilor Mahan abstaining from approval of the minutes of September 1st. There are no other items on our agenda, which brings us to a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
I will make a motion that we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Christensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Don't forget to turn your microphones off.